Let's bring this April 8th, 2021 Dixon County Planning Commission meeting to order, please. Um, Mr. Woodrow, can I get you give devotion, please?
Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to meet here tonight and conduct the business of our county. Lord, we ask you to give us the strength and the wisdom and the courage to make good decisions here tonight. Lord, we ask you to watch over us, guide us, keep us safe and in your love. Most of all, we thank you for Jesus, for it's in his precious holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Woodrow. Mr. Darnell, would you call roll, please, sir? Todd Berry?
Here.
Robert Woodrow?
Here.
Jeff Spencer?
Here.
Mac Pilkington?
Here.
Robert Qualls? David Brogdon?
Here.
Harold Williams?
Here.
Shane Chandler?
Here.
Gary Peeler?
Here.
Christie Sullivan?
Here.
Wayne Durham?
Here.
Robert Comer?
Here.
Mr. Falls is on the board.
Is he on there?
He's on the board, but I didn't hear him.
I'm not hearing him. May have to call him or something.
I'm a little tight on my... Okay. I don't recognize if Hopey gets in or whether...
Yeah, may have to do it by phone, because Charlie's trying to get him connected.
I apologize. My battery's a little tight.
He didn't join? Okay, he joined on a microphone, so we'll have to get him on the phone.
Okay.
Hang on, he's trying...
Robert Qualls?
Here.
All right, okay, we got you now. Thank you.
Outstanding, thank you.
We, we had a technical difficulty.
Well, I'm glad that's behind us.
At this time, I'd like to recognize the visitors in the crowd. If you all have not signed in at the podium, please do so as you exit. We'll move into the approval of the minutes. We have last month's minutes and the month befores that we revised. Everybody looked over those?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the revised minutes and the minutes from last month as they're presented.
Have a motion to approve by Robert Woodrow. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mac Pilkington. Do a roll call vote, please. Todd Berry?
Yes.
Robert Woodrow?
Yes.
Jeff Spencer?
Yes.
Mac Pilkington?
Yes.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
David Brogdon?
Yes.
Harold Williams?
Yes.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Gary Peeler?
Yes.
Christie Sullivan?
Yes.
Wayne Durham?
Yes.
Robert Comer?
Yes.
Chairman, motion carries.
Thanks, sir.
We'll move down into items, and I will need to swap item number one and two around, please. So we'll start with item number one, which is actually item number two. Preliminary plat for lots one through four of Breezy Land Partners subdivision. Tax map 094, part of parcel 023.08, 8.4 acres, Jones Creek Road, Dixon, Tennessee, A1 agriculture, 10th district.
So that's, that's item one on the agenda, but two as it's numbered in your packet, right?
Yes, please. No, it's actually, yeah, it actually will be number one on your packet. It'd be the one that's got the yellow. Okay, okay, sorry about that. Don't mean to confuse you, but it is lots one through four. It is the one on Jones Creek.
I said it backwards. It's number one in your packet, but number two on the agenda.
Correct, yes.
This was a preliminary plat that was surveyed by Brown Land Surveying to create four new lots. When you look at it, there is a six-inch water line that was not marked on there, but it is on there, and there is a fire hydrant that is located near the northwest corner of lot one. You'll also see there's two sets of TBA transmission lines that run across the property. One of them has an easement of 150 foot, and the other has an easement of 75 foot. When you look at the picture, there's also a third set of overhead power lines that crosses lot, the rear of lots three and four. The applicant is working with Dixon Electric to relocate these lines. If they can't be relocated, building sites for lot three and four will be almost impossible. Mr. Collins?
All right, um, the way my comments go, they follow much the same direction that Mr. Darnell went there. The, uh, the thing that's most noticeable with the lot arrangement with the overhead electric lines, it appears to, you know, limit the, uh, the build, the potential for the, the building envelopes for, you know, several of the lots here. It, of course, uh, you know, lots one and two seemingly seem to be restricted to building towards the front acreage portion of their respective lot, while lots three and four may have to, uh, build and be restricted to the rear portion of the, of the acreage, by the way the easements are crossing over these properties. So that is something that, um, will, should be, um, the future purchaser of those lots should certainly be aware of, the development potential for all four of those lots due to these easements. The, uh, under zoning issues, the, um, you know, I, I pointed out that, uh, the A1 zone, of course, provides a minimum front setback of 50 feet. Uh, the plat's depiction of the front setback for each of the lots, um, there's a, a line that was drawn that was intended to demonstrate this is where the front setback is, and it does not match the scale that's provided there on the plat. So, uh, I did recommend that the, uh, that the, uh, front setback be, you know, match the scale that's, uh, that's provided. Additionally, side rear setbacks should also be depicted on, uh, on the plat for, for all four lots. In the surveyor's notes, the, uh, you know, although the property does not lie in a special flood hazard area, the firm panel that cited should be, um, 0252 instead of 0256. And the effective date for that panel is still, that's still correct, it's just the map panel just needs to be changed. Let's see, with drainage, the, you know, according to, uh, you know, the, of course, the, uh, lack of contour is, that's not being provided on this preliminary plat, which is a checklist item here to, uh, to be added. The, according to staff sources, uh, there appears to be a gradual dissension from the public road to the back. Uh, you know, additionally, there appears to be a, a wet weather, uh, water course that crosses lots one to, one and two in a southeastern type fashion. You can see it on the aerial, uh, as, you know, there's some trees that line a portion of that. Of course, that, uh, water course does pass through those electric line easements, so it's, um, dwellings and any incidental structures can't be built under those power lines anyhow, so it may not be, um, may not be considered much of an issue, but it's still, um, a recommendation by staff that a minimum 10-foot wide drainage easement be put along that water course to, you know, minimize any, uh, interference of that, that water course, so it can do its, uh, do its job. Of course, Dave's already talked about the six-inch water line, um, the fire hydrant being labeled, um, it's, let's see. With site visibility, that's, that's on page two of my comments. Lot one is the one that staff's most concerned with as far as the driveway placement. It does lie the closest to the curvature of Jones Creek Road. Unless, unless I'm, I'm mistaken on this, it's posted 45 mile an hour speed on this, uh, this area of Jones Creek Road. Uh, so it, um, our regulations prescribe a minimum, uh, 500 feet site distance for driveway placement. So that's going to be a, a tough fit for, um, trying to, for lot one to meet that, uh, distance. So if, um, you know, it's a suggestion of staff, as I mentioned here, to restrict it as close to the property line with lot two as possible, if you're so inclined to require that. Or it may be a tougher decision to, uh, adjusting that lot line, or, um, lots one and two may have to get, you know, put together and that, to, you know, get that greater distance. That's a tough decision, but, um, unless septic systems, uh, you know, septic can't be, uh, put on that side or something, so it's, anyway, it's something for y'all to think about.
That's a question I have.
All right.
Uh, as far as the setbacks and stuff, I know it's off the property lines, but is there any restrictions as far as how close you can build to the easement itself? Can you build right up against it?
Um, I think as long as you stay out of that easement.
That is correct. Yeah, I just have to stay out of it. All right, my next question is, it looks like, you know, most definitely you probably want to have a septic system inside the easement area, so what if the electric company has to service these holes and stuff and have driver trucks across your septic system? You know, what's the chances of that?
Well, I knew I should have checked the, the guidelines. Um, I know that there are setbacks for structures and roads and easements, like access easements, where you've got a septic system and its field plan is located.
They have kind of gotten to the point they did not like to put them underneath the easements. At one time, at one, one time they used to put them under there, but now they've gotten to the point they don't like them under there for that reason. Yeah. Right.
All right, thank you. Um, other than that, the, um, I guess last, uh, mention on the driveway placement, you know, like, we, we've usually, when we do have a, um, a need to restrict a driveway placement, um, we usually require a notation on the plat that so notes driveway for lot one shall be restricted this many feet from the nearest intersection or that curve or, or as close to that lot, uh, property line with the next lot as, as possible. Uh, so, uh, by the time we get to final plat, uh, staff will, um, you know, suggest the, um, a notation for our driveway restriction unless y'all are inclined to decide differently on this, uh, discussion topic. Um, other than that, there were six bullet items to, um, that I pointed out, the preliminary plat needs to, uh, uh, have corrected or be addressed, and they're so listed there
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I can't support this. This is awful poor planning and, uh, you know, I, I know that, uh, our developers and, uh, builders in the county are, you know, desperately seeking places to put houses, but I just, uh, with all of the, uh, easements and the problems we're seeing with this, I, I just don't, I just don't think I can support it. However, I'm gonna let whoever's district.
Before that, I'd, I'd like to point out that there are a number of items that are missing on this preliminary plat, and there's a checklist that is in our subdivision regulations that should be available to everybody, so you know what needs to be on a preliminary plat. Uh, you know, I don't, I don't think we have the, the appropriate information on here to review this at this time, independent of the, of the other issues, but we're looking at a plat that's not, that's not complete. It's not, it's not, it's not that hard to get that information. Uh, we ought to have appropriate plats presented to us.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? I support the two comments just made, but I have an additional question for staff. My question regards, uh, on the aerial lot 23 dot 18, I think it is. Um, it looks like it's creating a flag lot. Am I reading that wrong?
Well, it just, it looks like it's just an easement to the parent parcel, you know.
So that is not what we consider a flag lot, which is discouraged?
Right, because it'd be more than five acres.
All right, got it. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll just, uh, go ahead and, and say that I would deny, uh, this preliminary plat for lots one through four of Breezy Land Partners subdivision. Okay, have a proper motion to deny this plat by Robert Woodrow. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, and my second would be for the fact that it's an incomplete plat.
Okay, you want to add that to your? Okay, so I have a second by Harold Williams. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, we have a proper motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote, and this is, yes would be to deny this plat. Todd Berry?
Yes.
Robert Woodrow?
Yes.
Jeff Spencer?
Yes.
Mac Pilkington?
Yes.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
David Brogdon?
Yes.
Harold Williams?
Yes.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Gary Peeler?
He's muted.
So?
Gary Peeler?
You're still muted, Mr. Chairman. Yes. Yes.
Christie Sullivan?
Yes.
Wayne Durham?
Yes.
Robert Comer?
Yes.
Motion carries to nine. Okay, we'll now move into item number two, which is preliminary plat for lots one through two and five through nine of the Breezy Land subdivision. Tax map 134, part of parcel 17 point 04, 7.10 acres, Porter Road and Hogan Road, Berners, Tennessee, A1 agriculture.
Okay, you will notice in your comments, there's, uh, this division only includes parcel 1704 of map 134, not 17, uh, point 12 as stated in the comments. Uh, there was a small technical error with that. Uh, this preliminary plat was surveyed by Brown Land Surveying to create seven additional new lots. Lots three and four are on a separate two-lot subdivision plat. Uh, there is a six-inch water line that runs along the whole length of the property, and two new fire hydrants will be required. Uh, no surety has been provided at this time for them. Mr. Collins?
All right, yeah, to reiterate, um, Dave on this, please disregard any mention of parcel 1712. I just, that's just a, just an error on staff on that one.
Hey, Brad. We're getting some feedback out of your mic. Could you move it around just a little bit, or is your phone close by? I don't know. Yeah, just, if you don't mind, just use Harold's mic, see if it cuts yours off. Thank you.
All right, how's that?
Better, perfect.
Okay. All right, um, let's see, this, uh, this is located, uh, once again, in the city of Dixon's urban growth boundary. Um, it is on the, um, you know, on the south side of where I-40 and, uh, not far from where 840 comes in. Um, this portion of Hogan, Hogan Road, that is, where it intersects and, uh, Porter Road takes over. Um, let's see, the, uh, under zoning issues, the plat does not depict the setbacks, so that's, um, uh, plat I reviewed, uh, that's certainly one bullet item, two, uh, surveyors should address on the, uh, on the plat. This, of course, is only seven lots that are being proposed, not nine, so, uh, you know, please disregard, uh, that statement about nine lots. There is, uh, on lot six, there appears to be, um, a minor overhead electric line. I'm presuming that's Dixon Electric once again. Um, there's no note indicating the, um, uh, the necessity of an electrical easement. Uh, there's, uh, no reference to the line being relocated. So, um, you know, however, with that said, staff doesn't believe the easement's gonna, or that line's location will significantly inhibit the development on that, uh, on that lot, uh, being that it is as close as it is to the property line with the proposed lot six. There's, uh, just a drainage comment that I have here, that, um, it is a, a gradual dissension from the public road to the back. Um, this is, um, I believe, not far from lot six, and, uh, to be kept by the remaining acreage of the, of the farm, the parent parcel. There's a, uh, a pond that appears to, the, uh, that, that's more than likely going to be, uh, uh, be affected by the, uh, the, the new runoff that's going to come from the, you know, a couple of the new lots that are in the nearest vicinity. Let's see, there's, um, six-inch water line that's shown on the plat. There, um, at least on the plat that I got in my packet, there was a, um, a hand-marked two locations for two new fire hydrants, and they'll be, uh, placed at proposed lots three and seven. So the applicant, uh, being that this is a preliminary plat, uh, before we see the final plat, we should have, uh, confirmation that, uh, that a surety's been posted, uh, with the water authority of Dixon County guaranteeing their installation. Let's see. That site visibility of the driveway placement, uh, I think, um, that early, that first comment about lot three, that may be, uh, irrelevant since that is a separate plat, so we may worry about that part. However, lots six and seven do lie at the intersection of Hogan Road with, uh, Porter, and, uh, our, uh, table four in our subdivision regulations provides a minimum distance for driveways, uh, where two minor roads intersect. So, um, that minimum distance is prescribed 50 feet. So, um, staff does recommend that, at least by final plat, a notation needs to be cited for restricting the driveway access for both these lots. Other than that, there's six, uh, six bullet items that, uh, the surveyor just needs to add to the plat. That's all I got.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Mr. Brogdon? What's your district?
Just to clarify, we're looking at the subdividing of, of one, two, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, three and four are not included, or did I misunderstand that?
They're on a separate two-lot subdivision plat.
And they're not, uh, for, under consideration?
No.
I have a question for staff, if I may.
Yes.
Do we know the nature of the farming activity on the remainder lot?
It's all in pasture.
So it's, it's?
They used to cut hay off as far as...
It's crops, it's not cattle?
No, there's no fence on it.
Okay, that's what I need to know, thanks.
Again, I'm just concerned that we have a plat in front of us that's, that's incomplete. Uh, the preliminary plat is the only occasion that this group has to look at elevation and topography. Uh, we can say that it needs to be added to this preliminary plat, but when we see this again, we'll see the final plat, which is not required to have the topography on it. So, and I know by the pictures, this looks pretty flat, but we ought to insist that, that our preliminary plats meet the requirements in the subdivision regulations.
I think it's pretty flat. It may be a little bit of a hill at one and two. Is that right, Mr. Brogdon?
It, it is, I think that with the, the rainwater we had, it, it held a lot of water this past week or so, uh, we noticed that, but it's, uh, it relatively flat, and it is easy to see around that bend, and here's, as somebody asked, where it is pasture land.
But I agree with Mr. Williams, we, we need what we need on the preliminary to properly approve it.
That's, that's, that's my feeling. I, I mean, as far as, as far as the layout and the, and the size of the lots and, and some of the other issues that, that, that Mr. Collins brought up, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, but we have, we have minimum requirements for our, for our preliminary plats and for our final plats, and we ought to adhere to them before this group gets, gets, uh, gets an opportunity to look at them.
Yes, Mr. Woodrow, you have a comment?
I do, uh...
Between, uh, lot seven and eight is this area with this pond, and, uh, uh, you know, we live in Tennessee and, uh, you know, we've just had some flooding issues in, in neighboring areas. Uh, I mean, the size of this pond could easily triple, you know, uh, I, I, you know, I, I'm not right offhand familiar with the, I mean, I know where it is, but I'm, you know, I can't picture, you know, exactly where this pond is and stuff and how, you know, I mean, is it, right now, is it a foot deep or five foot deep, and is it gonna get, you know, twice or three times the size? And if it does, uh, you know, uh, somebody's gonna have some wet socks if they live in lot number eight.
I think six and seven would probably be the lowest point of this whole plat.
Okay.
But we don't know that.
But, but we don't know that, correct?
See, that's it. I, I, I have no clue. I have a flat sheet of paper here, so...
Correct.
Once again, I agree with Mr. Williams, and I think, uh, this one ought to be sent back again.
Is that a motion, sir?
Uh, yes, I, I would make a motion. No, go ahead, Dave. It, it's your, it's your, go, go ahead, go ahead.
I think, but to be consistent with what we did on the last one, I think we would move to, to deny this based on the same basis as the one previous, that we need to, to have more, uh, details on the, uh, the plat before it's entered. That's the motion.
Okay, I have a motion, but David Brogdon to deny this plat due to the, uh, fulfillment of the staff comments and requirements.
I'll second that.
And have a second by Harold Williams. Any further discussion?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is two we've seen, and we've, and we've been seeing some others in the past that have not been complete, they're being rushed in, and, you know, uh, Mr. Collins is, is, you know, uh, open to the public and can answer questions if people have a mind to. Uh, they can call our planning and zoning office, uh, they can go online, uh, they can come to your planning commissioner in your district for assistance in completing these things. That's part of the reason we have 12 planning commissioners each in their own area, to be familiar with these neighborhoods and these areas, and if you have a question, you know, please contact any of us or all of us, and, so we don't have issues like this again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodrow. No further comment, we'll give a roll call vote, and once again, yes would be to deny. Todd Berry?
Yes.
Robert Woodrow?
Yes.
Jeff Spencer?
Yes.
Mac Pilkington?
Yes.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
David Brogdon?
Yes.
Harold Williams?
Yes.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Gary Peeler?
Yes.
Christie Sullivan?
Yes.
Wayne Durham?
Yes.
Robert Comer?
Yes.
Motion carries to the nine. Thank you, sir. We now move into item number three, the final plat of the Hasselhun... We'll now move into item number three, the final plat of the Hasselhun subdivision, tax map 074, parcel 009.04, 4.96 acres, Shorty Few Road, Dixon, Tennessee, A1 agriculture, Ninth District.
This is a final plat also surveyed by Brown Land Surveying to create a four-lot subdivision. The water in this area is supplied by Sylvia, Tennessee Pond Utility District. As you see on the plat, there is a six-inch water line that runs the length of this property, but it is fed by the four-inch main in front of the Hampton subdivision, which we just had in October of last year at the corner of Shorty Few and Ridge Road. And there was no fire hydrants put in down there, but there is a six-inch line in front of this property. And there is a letter from Utility District that was included in your packet, but this time no surety has been placed on it. Mr. Collins?
Let's see, me and Dave spoke, gosh, was it this morning?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Lately, I've been busy, so it's, I think it's showing, I'm finding error, more errors in these comments as I go, but my apologies for the errors, but we believe that Shorty Few Road, let's see, we had this discussion once before with the Hamptons.
It's a minor collector according to our map, yeah.
Yeah, even though I was, the roadmap I've got has it as a minor status, but, so we're gonna have to look into that one to make sure we're reading from the same sheet. Let's see, this is in the planned growth area, according to our county growth plan. It is conceptualized for more progressive residential development, provided the utility infrastructure is adequate to serve the area. This plat depicts a six-inch water line, which I think this is something me and Dave talked about, where I believe it's been confirmed that there's the presence of both a four-inch and a six-inch water line, so I know that we do have a policy that if it's four lots or greater and there's a six-inch water line, they're on the hook for a fire hydrant. So that is certainly something that staff will still recommend, that the, this subdivision be required to install at least one fire hydrant. And since Sylvia, Tennessee Pond is the utility provider, then the applicant should work with that utility and provide either the guarantee that it'll be installed, or the applicant's welcome to go out and put it in themselves. But I don't, I'm not, I know Water Authority will accept the funds, and they'll go out and install it, but I don't know if Sylvia does that. But that's just something for the applicant to...
Generally, on an existing line, they want to do it themselves. If it's new construction, you can, they'll let you install the main and the water line, you know, or install a hydrant, you know, while they're, while they're adding to a water line.
All right. Under Letter B, this is where I caught the error. I was, I think my intent was that there's, there appears to be some, some ditching out there, so with, and this is a repeat comment that staff feels necessary to make, is with all developments where they front an existing roadway, there needs to be ditching and the right-sized culvering, so that water doesn't just, this doesn't just get overlooked with all the development we're seeing in this county. But I do stand corrected, this is not anywhere near Hogan Road and the continuation of Porter, so please, just strike through that. But still, the intent's there, that ditching and culvering. Other than that, it's, it's just the plat just lacked all the necessary signatures.
I have a question about this property also. Has there been like a hundred-year flood assessment done on this property? And the reason I'm asking, the property just to the south of that property, or plant south, I was by there a couple weeks ago, and we had that last big rain event, and there's a few cows out there, and of course, the grass is kind of short, but the whole field was underwater, and I see you got a, they've designed or put a note in here for a 10-foot swell easement, and I'm assuming it's a drainage swell. Has anybody looked at that to see what that's gonna do as far as potential future flooding?
As far as the special flood hazard area?
It's not.
It's not, it's not, not on the map depicted as an area.
FEMA just did update all their stuff back in January, so we got the latest maps in the office, and they did change a lot from the last several years, but this is not in a flood zone. Not saying I'm on the flood.
I know the property, you know, like if you come off of, you know, you're heading north, I mean, south on Shorty Few, you know, it's elevated.
Yes.
But that particular pop property is kind of folded out right there, and like I said, the last big rain event, I've traveled through there about every day, and it had probably six or eight inches of water standing across the whole field.
I would personally like to know that the hydrant issue would be resolved, since we haven't dealt with Sylvia, Tennessee City Pond that much.
Well, I certainly agree. That's, that is a requirement that we are trying to stay consistent with, making sure that...
According to the letter from them, it says installation will be, you know, at the responsibility of the developer, according to the letter they sent in your packet.
There would need to be a bond posted to...
Well, it'd be, it's, it's, say, on the responsibility.
Or, or certified funds to the utility district.
Right, if they would put it in, but the way they've written the letter, it sounds like it's the responsibility of the developer to put it in, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's right, yeah. 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 Well, I'm in the board. We need, we need surety that this fire hydrant is gonna be taken care of, so, I mean, I would move that we approve this final plat with the surety made for the fire hydrant, either installation or funds provided. I would rather see funds provided in a letter from the utility district stating such.
Right, we would have to have that before we signed off on the plat.
And with, and with Mr. Collins' other staff comments.
Okay. I have a motion to approve by Robert Woodrow with staff comments and the surety that the hydrant be installed.
And Veronica, you can clean, you can have some latitude to clean up my verbiage.
Second.
Second by David Brogdon. Any further discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Todd Berry?
Yes.
Robert Woodrow?
Yes.
Jeff Spencer?
Yes.
Mac Pilkington?
Yes.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
David Brogdon?
Yes.
Harold Williams?
Yes.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Gary Peeler?
Yes.
Kristy Sullivan?
Yes.
Wayne Durham?
Yes.
Robert Comer?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, sir. We'll move into the fourth item, which is the final plat re-subdivision for Lots Seven through Nine, Section Two of the T.L. Allen subdivision, tax map 75, parcels 37.21, 37.22, 37.23, and part of parcel 37.14, 5.73 acres, Columbia Road, Charlotte, Tennessee, First District.
Okay, this is an amended final plat of Lots Seven through Nine of Section Two of the T.L. Allen subdivision, and was surveyed by X.L. Land Company. Section Two was approved last year in May of 2020. What this will do, this will combine Lots Seven, Eight, and the 50-foot access that served parcel 37.14. It will create a new Lot Seven. You'll also notice, if you look closely, the property lines on Lot Nine will change slightly, and this adds about 100 square foot to it, but it's not, not really changed acreage on it. Mr. Collins?
You'd think that I'd print my, my own staff comments, come prepared, and I left that page at home. Oh, gosh. Phew. Okay. Let's see, we approved the original Section Two subdivision at the May 2020 meeting. With this modification to the lot lines, the adjustment, the parcel, parcel 37.14, it will be left with only one direct abutment to Columbia Road compared to the previous, previous approved plat. The, of course, if this amended plat is approved, then the future, any future division of this parcel, this parent parcel, will be considerably limited unless another access is brought in from another property somewhere else, or a public road is constructed through that remaining lone access point. So that is a planning issue that should be considered by the owner of that property. I didn't have any zoning issues. Lot Eight, as already been mentioned, will be eliminated by the, this adjustment. There was a comment that was raised back during the May 2020 plat about drainage, that we want to make sure, due to the land's contour sloping towards Columbia Road instead of away from it, that, you know, to, you know, in an effort to minimize any negative runoff to impact Columbia Road, that the, that a notation needs to be in there, that ditching will be installed so that the, you know, this won't be overlooked during lot construction. So once again, staff recommends a notation about that. Other than that, it's just lack of all necessary signatures.
You will notice on Lot Seven, there is a 50-foot easement going to the back parcel, but that can only serve one lot if they do cut another lot off back there.
On the new...
Yeah, if you look on Number Seven, when you look at it there towards the right side, there is a 50-foot easement that still runs across that, but the easement can only serve one parcel.
There's no easement at all.
I was gonna say, there's not on mine?
Totally taken off, okay.
Steve, did, did you have to do this for soils, or?
They weren't bigger lots.
Okay.
There is, there is, excuse me, sorry about that. There is the easement that's between Three and Four, and then this larger property that is behind and to the, to the side of Lot Ten, I mean, there's, there's more Columbia Road frontage for that larger parcel, right?
No, it's only like it's left, and it's not easement, it's actually basically, it's not, it's just 14 acres, it's just real, or access to that figure.
Between Three and Four.
Between Three and Four, it's up the street, this was the second.
Yeah, 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 but what I'm saying, when you, when you look at, when you look at the larger, the larger layout, I mean, there is, the 37.14 has additional Columbia Road access, but then this, then this is wrong.
Yes, it's got one, where the parcel, the parcel is still being put together, there was some, that's still road.
Okay.
But there is a piece that is a bond, or they had to, it's probably not very attached, but...
Okay, okay, all right, thanks, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve this final plat, the T.L. Allen subdivision.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Todd Berry and a second by R.J. Comer. Any further discussion?
It needs to include the staff comments about the ditches and...
Yes, I, I...
Both motion makers agree to adding the staff comments.
Agreed. Thank you.
If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Todd Berry?
Yes.
Robert Woodrow?
Yes.
Jeff Spencer?
Yes.
Mac Pilkington?
Yes.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
David Brogdon?
Yes.
Harold Williams?
Yes.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Gary Peeler?
Yes.
Kristy Sullivan?
Yes.
Wayne Durham?
Yes.
Robert Comer?
Yes.
Motion is approved, carries. Thank you, sir. We'll now move down into other business, and I'm gonna shuffle this around a little bit and let Mr. R.J. Comer speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I won't take too long, there's, I wanted to give a report on the traffic study guidelines that you, all the commissioners were given the draft, what was called the final draft at last meeting. I want to thank Commissioner Durham for preparing some really thoughtful comments and suggestions for those guidelines. With the approval of the working group, I met with Mr. Durham and with Mr. Darnell, and we went through the comments and arrived at a consensus of some changes we'd like to make. So at this point, there's no action item, I'm just reporting that the next step will be to reconvene the working group, go over the changes, and the working group will then prepare and distribute a revised traffic study guidelines with those changes incorporated. The other thing we want to do, and what we're gonna look at the timing of, is the county has hired the planning group of Volkert to do the work for the land use and transportation plan update. As part of Volkert's team, they have some well-qualified traffic engineers that we might want to be able to take the time to let them look at this and tell us what they think before we come back and give a final approval on. That's one of the things the working group will be discussing, so that's, I just wanted to report that status. I anticipate the working group will meet before our next meeting, I'm not sure whether the revised guidelines will come back that time, but the general feeling between Mr. Durham and myself was that it's better to take a little extra time and make sure these guidelines have all of the input and changes necessary to make them the best guidelines they can be. And even if it takes another couple of months to bring them back, the time is worth spending. I also want to invite all my other colleagues, that if they have any comments on the traffic study guidelines, feel free to contact me or staff, and we can do the same thing we did with Mr. Durham, but I would encourage you to do that sooner than later, because at some point, we do have to pull the trigger on the thing.
Sure.
All right. The other item, Mr. Chair, if I can have just a few more minutes. Myself and a few of my colleagues here on the Planning Commission have begun to get concerned about the loss of frontage on our county roads due to subdivisions, and we want to form a working group to explore mechanisms that balance the growth pressure in our county with the preservation of rural and agricultural land uses in character. We think this is the right time for that, because you've got the update to the land use plan and transportation plan. I spoke to the mayor this week, they think they're gonna be able to roll that out coming pretty soon in May, or possibly May, very likely June, and so this working group would harmonize with that effort to explore these efforts. And again, the effort is to balance and get out ahead of this growth pressure by figuring out mechanisms that we can use to, to slow the loss of our frontage on all the country roads. As all of you've noticed, what happens is we've got these subdivisions that take the frontage out, and then you've got these large agricultural land uses back behind them. One of our purposes on this...
One of our purposes on this commission, based on our regulations, is to manage that kind of thing to avoid conflicts. And the other thing is, growth pressure does need to have bodies like ours take the initiative to be smart about it, to be planning and, and advancing what we really want to have done. And so that's what this working group would do, is the, the purpose is to accommodate growth, but in a smart way that preserves rural and agricultural land uses and protects those kind of land uses in Dixon County.
Mr. Comer, have you already put together a team or looking for volunteers?
I'm looking for volunteers, absolutely.
Okay, I have Todd Berry, Robert Woodrow, and David Brogdon. Of course, being the chairman, I will be in attendance myself.
That'd be great. Then we will get to work on it and we will be also coordinating with Volkert when the time is right to, to see how the two, how our work coincides with theirs and make sure that's harmonious.
Okay, and prior to planning meetings on that as well or?
Likely, yes.
That'd work best for me, how about?
It is.
Okay, sounds great.
And to add to that, Mr. Comer and Mr. Chairman, you know, some of the discussion we've had and some heated discussion as of late is, you know, gobbling up all of the road frontage and even, I've talked to some of the members of the city of Dixon Planning Commission and they're looking around the corner at this as well. They're seeing that there's only so many miles or so much road frontage and it's getting gobbled up. And what we see is five years or 10 years down the road, the developers are going to be coming back and wanting a whole bunch of special exceptions, you know, so they can go in and re-divide, you know, these leftover areas and we need to get ahead of that now. And hopefully.
With what Volkert is working on, this is a joint venture between the county, the city of Dixon, the city of White Bluff, and possibly the city of Burns. This is something that's been in the works for a long time, but it was delayed last year for COVID and we hope to get started on it pretty soon.
Is this something, Mr. Comer, is this something you want to do as a small group or do you mind if the rest of the commission sits in as listeners or what?
Well, I, I think the more voices on this, the better. I do think that, that producing a product is always a little easier with a smaller group than with a larger one, but.
I agree.
But if, there might be, the working group might have the responsibility to ultimately draft something, but the larger commission should always be able to attend and weigh in, yeah.
Mr. Brogdon, could you have a comment, question?
Just a comment on what Mr. Woodrow said, Steve Haley at the working session for the school board is, was addressing the same issue then, said that we're basically, we can't decide what the growth is for the school systems because we have a limited amount of roads. The county's not building new roads and we can almost add up how many, how many homesites can be built on the road frontage that we have and that's going to limit our growth. We're going to be a limited growth county if we don't do something about it now.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I got.
That's all you have, okay. Then next we'll move into discussion on swells and drainage easements.
Okay, you'll have some information in your packet. Lately, the question of drainage easements on plats have come up. Depending on the way it is worded on the plat, depends on the way Rick, I think most of you know Rick Robson with State Groundwater, how they have to deal with it. When it clearly states on there is a drainage easement, required setback is 25 foot on each side from the edge of the easement. I know I've heard from a lot of the surveyors, the developers, and of course, you know, your developers want to keep your lots as close to one acre as possible to produce the maximum number of lots. You know, if you read through, I don't know if you've read through the email that Rick had sent and the diagram, what's going to happen on a lot of your one-acre lots, it's only going to allow enough room, you're going to have septic field lines to run for a two-bedroom system. Most of your spec houses, you know, they're always building for at least a three-bedroom or four-bedroom, that's, you know, that's pretty standard. If you'll notice, they run into this problem in Montgomery County several years ago and there's some copies in there that Darren Christie had sent me of what they had come up with that satisfied the state and still have drainage issues. They consider a swell anything that's 12 inches or less. Once it gets deeper than 12 inches, they consider it a drainage ditch. After we'd sent the packets out, Dave McMillan, which is here tonight, he'd said he may have some other ideas, like I think most of you are familiar with him, I don't know if he has any comments or anything that he'd like to add to it.
Here or there?
You can come up here.
Okay. Yeah, with the, I heard about this, I'm sorry I didn't hear the other meeting and by admission, I didn't go back and watch it on YouTube, but when we're talking about swells or drainage off of lots, I mean, we've got a tool and it's, it's been mentioned here, I don't know how many times tonight about elevations. In our zoning regulations, I just checked, slope is mentioned 134 times, I think. And we have high resolution, lot R data for the whole county, the whole state, as far as that goes, two and a half foot, every two and a half square foot, we know the elevation plus or minus that much. So as far as, I asked, you know, what is this, what is the problem this is solving and there is none per se other than drainage? And for every subdivision that's submitted, whether it's one lot, two lots, or 100 lots, we can solve that problem pretty quickly with basically free data and we don't have to survey it, we don't have to go out there. This information's available, again, it's free, it was bought with federal money, it's a 10 and a half million dollar investment for the state and it's open to anybody. So I urge y'all to use that, if y'all want to see some, I'd be glad, and I've made this motion before, I'd be glad to show it to you individually, as a group, corporately, however you want to. I mean, we're using it, I don't go to the field that I don't have it in my hand, period. And so the whole thing, in my, my frame of reference is, we are not going to solve if drainage issues, one lot at a time, we're going to say, we're going to solve those as a landscape. And that's the way we ought to be looking at it in, in a rural watershed or anything. So that's my only comment, that's available.
David, could you possibly do like a 10-minute or 15-minute presentation and kind of condense some of it and give us some?
My wife says no. I can't do anything to her, but yeah, no, I can, no, I'd be glad to.
Maybe next meeting or meeting after, you know, we could put that on our agenda and?
I'll work with him, I can show you that, we can do overhead and.
Can we live feed?
Oh, I can't, so I'd have to print it out, okay, yep, I can do that then.
That, that would be good, that would be good, because I, I know a couple of these subdivisions, something too that needs to be looked at as well when we're talking about all of this drainage. You know, it's fine right now when there's all of these woodlots or pasture that, you know, the drain, the runoff, the culverts in the public right-ofways and in the public roads, you know, handle them sufficiently now. However, when you, when you add all of the roofs and the driveways and the impermeable areas that you got that much more runoff, then all of a sudden, you double it and the cap, the culverts and the drains that are in the public roads and in the public right-ofways can't handle it. And that's something that we need to look at too with these subdivisions now that say, you know, if you're going into a low place and there's a, you know, a 15-inch or, or a 24-inch culvert and now you're going to double the amount of water that's going to go through there, somebody needs to pick up the tab.
Well, and that's, that's the question, are we or aren't we? And then, and, you know, we have to plan ahead and I get that, it's just to me, we've got a tool that's there.
And again, it's not, I'm not wanting to, you know, put such a, you know, financial burden on the backs of our developers, but, you know, this stuff is coming and we're getting a little bit overwhelmed with it and, you know, somebody's got to pay for it. And, and the problem is, is it's not so much the price of the culvert as it is, all of a sudden you come in and the road is gone because the culvert got plugged up and washed away and now who's going to take care of that?
So that, that's it, when we, when I heard the discussion was tended toward drainage and possibly easements on these lots, like Rick was saying, and of course, part of that comes from state rule, if, if there is a cut or a drain, a natural drain that's more than 12 inches, there's automatically a 25-foot setback per side, so that's 50 foot on each side. So Rick is saying that if you're going to put a 10-foot for a future ditch that may or may never be there because it wouldn't solve the problem to begin with, he's going to set back off of that 25 feet. So that's, that's where it becomes an issue. So I'm volunteering to do that and I'd be glad to do it because it's our data, we can get to the point where we could have training for that matter with, the state will come down here or the state GIS group would, of which I was past president of.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Thank you in advance.
So, so Dave is, is, no, I'm sorry, more than one day here. You're, you're good, you're good, thank you for, for, for your presentation. Are, are you, are we looking for something to be added to the subdivision regulations about drainage? Oh, okay, good.
What Rick's saying with all these one-acre lots, you know, if they're classified written on there as a drainage easement, it's going to limit a lot of the only two-bedroom system.
We, we need to look at our information before we, you know, see what we're getting into. And let, let Mr. McMillan make a presentation and we can look and maybe even get some information from groundwater as well, because it's something that's, it's coming, we need, we need to address it.
A little food for thought on this issue is out in my area, a new subdivision's going in, an existing home, several homes have come in beside that now. These rains that we've had, I noticed a driveway was cut across a natural drain with no culvert. It backed water up two lots over into the existing home that's been there for 25 years. So our developers are not worried about good neighbors, they're in and out. So the people that, that reside in these, these homes now, it's up to them and you're going to have friction between neighbors because of that, somewhere down the road. So we're, we're seeing those types of things now as well. All right, if nothing else, next scheduled meeting to be May 13th, 2021, 7 o'clock, Dixon County Courthouse, annex.